Number fifteen, consideration of twenty nineteen, twenty CDBG funding.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This evening, I'm before you on an item that is a note and file and to provide any feedback to staff, and it's regarding our community developments of block grants. So, a little bit about community development block grant and the reason why we're bringing this now, kind of early on, is this is an opportunity for the council to give some feedback prior to the need to actually adopt what's called an action plan, and that'll happen here in the near future. So, first of all, the city is what's called an entitlement jurisdiction, receiving federal funds through HUD. The intent of the program really is to provide decent housing, suitable living environment, and to expand economic opportunities, but it's really dedicated for low and moderate income persons. There's a few things that, as a result of being an entitlement city, that the city has to do. On an annual basis, the city has to adopt what's called an action plan. Historically, that's been in June. This year, it could be in July, and I'll talk a little bit about that later. Additionally, every five years, the city council has to adopt what's called a five-year consolidated plan. And this coming year, that'll be something that will be before the city council for approval. Then, the next annual report that needs to be provided is what's called the CAPR. And the CAPR is the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. It's required to be submitted within ninety days after the close of fiscal year. And that, through that report, we highlight the successes and to ensure that the funds met HUD and our consolidated plans requirement. On process, as relates to the announcement of funds, we never know. Basically, once Congress and the President signs a bill, that's when we'll have an understanding. Historically, we've known by now. Right now, we do not. And HUD has actually given us some guidance that is extending our time to where this could come back to the city council, actually, in July. And historically, they've said, hey, just use your past year's allocation for determining the amount of funds that you'll be receiving. Last year, we received just a little over, or actually, one dollar over, six hundred and fifty thousand. Even though we don't know the number, we still need to notify sub recipients, which that occurred at the beginning of this year. We sent it to all of our past recipients, anybody that we think might be a future sub-recipient. We held a public workshop on February sixth here at City Hall and talked about the program, our consolidated plan, and last year's annual plan. Applications were due to be submitted to the city by March thirteenth, and we received five applications. Those applications were reviewed, rated, and ranked by a team of staff, which included finance, planning, development services, and our consultant that helps us. The next process after this council meeting is we will prepare what's called the annual plan that I mentioned, and then, prior to council finalizing any action, we are required to do a thirty-day public notice, and the city council will hold a public hearing at that meeting. So, as we receive this, the funding, a certain percentage of the funds can be allocated to certain uses. So, first is administration. All of these numbers that I show to you this evening are making the assumption that we'll receive at least the same amount as last year, but there have been times where that funding has decreased. So, first, administration. The city, excuse me, the city council can authorize up to twenty percent for administrative costs. Historically, the city council has always adopted right at twenty percent, so that's there. Second is public services. Only fifteen percent of total funds can be set aside for public services. Historically, just a number of years ago, we had just literally a dozen sub- recipients. HUD came back and said, hey, you need, those groups need to get together, and they need to fund projects through one organization, and that's what's chosen to be the Sutter-Uba Homeless Consortium. They submitted an application for the entire amount, the ninety-seven thousand, five hundred dollars, for a variety of sub- recipients. That included the continuum of care, the consortium, Salvation Army, going blank off the top of my head, but there's hands of hope, and bridges to housing. Under public services, this is the funding that the city council could use or could allocate to direct funds to Sutter County for an emergency homeless shelter. We did not receive an application for a homeless shelter this year in public services. Staff in that committee is recommending that we set aside fifty percent of these funds, that we still don't give all the funds to Sutter-Uba Homeless Consortium, but that fifty percent of it be set aside for the operations of a homeless shelter if that's to be built. In the action plan, we would state if there's no determination by the end of this calendar year, that those funds could then go to the other uses that the homeless consortium is looking to do. I will tell you, the homeless consortium's not happy about that, but they also understand if the council wants to dedicate funds and not use specifically your general fund, but funding that can be used for that, that it could come from here. There are some additional homeless funding that'll be coming down through the state. We just don't know when and exactly how much, but that's the recommendation for public services, all to go to the homeless consortium, but half of it to be set aside for the possible shelter that's being proposed at Live Oak Boulevard. I believe the Salvation Army is looking at possibly operating that. Yes, Mayor?
Good question, just out of curiosity. Why would the homeless consortium not be happy with us setting aside money for a homeless shelter?
You know what? So, what I'd say is they want to make sure that all of their programs are funded, and they would hate to see one of their programs, a decrease in funding, so that you now are funding just a separate project. We believe that there will be additional funding in this coming year that will be before the city council will be allocating funds, that we would recommend allocating funds to the homeless consortium that will backfill their need. However, there's no guarantee. This is part of the variety of different funds that are coming down from the state through SB two and other funding at the state level. So, they would rather that, so you set fifteen percent aside for the current programs, and then if other programs came forward, that you put that towards the, for the homeless shelter in the future. But again, there's no guarantee when we're going to see or receive those funds.
Alright, thank you.
It was the same issue, how we have problems getting them all together also to work under one group, because they were receiving administrative funds, each different organization, and now we're able to just do that all through the consortium. And like I said, we've been open and honest with them. We let them know about this, and like I said, upset, but understanding.
Through the mayor. Mr. Gale, I've got a question concerning the fifty percent set aside.
Yes.
He specifically identified the Sutter County potential project, but could that fifty percent be used for any potential homeless shelter that came up? Because if the consortium came up with their own, could we not allocate it there, or Salvation Army came up with a separate one? Or do we have to be very specific that it's only the Sutter County one?
No, it can be general.
Okay.
And just say for a, you know, some type of shelter for homeless.
Okay.
And we'll make sure that the language include that.
Okay.
So, next, the next two, for other projects, you can dedicate up to sixty-five percent of your funds for both housing projects and public facilities. So, for housing projects, we received two applications. First was for Freed Center for Independent Living. This is something they've done on an annual basis. They've been a great partner. And one of the difficult issues with small organizations is getting them to report and meet our requirements for HUD. They've always been very successful. The second application we received was for the Regional Housing Authority for their King Woods Common Roofing Project. CDBG has funded this specific project a number of times over years for a variety of different issues. And then, in the attachment that was sent out, it mentioned that we received, it had no application, but it talked about a funding request of forty-seven thousand, five hundred and one, and it put it under the Regional Housing Authority. It is actually a city program that we have the Housing Authority manage for us. The reason why we didn't apply was that at the time of application, we had over a hundred thousand dollars in our owner occupied housing rehabilitation fund. We've recently had that number drop down below fifty thousand, because we've had projects come forward, and it's depleted those funds. And historically, the city council had provided somewhere between fifty and a hundred thousand dollars annually. Since that number's dipped down below fifty thousand, staff is recommending that we continue to fund that program. The reason I mentioned this owner occupied housing program is, just recently, we, so there are a variety of homes that are in disrepair in our community, and this is one way that we're able to many times give a loan at no interest, that we normally don't get paid back until the home actually sells, and then it becomes a program income. Under the owner occupied housing rehabilitation program, we can go in and fix one or two issues. We have other funding, which is called home funding, where we have to bring the entire house up to code. So, this really makes it so that if, you know, if we went in and we're trying to replace windows on a home, we don't have to look at all other code issues. We can just do that specific window replacement versus some of our other funding where you have to bring the entire house up to code, and it's very beneficial. Many times, we hear about this program through, it's marketed through our utility bills. Many times, realtors bring it up to people, since the Housing Authority does a great job going out and connecting with our realtors, and it's not like when they're selling a home, it's just realtors know a lot of people, people ask them questions, and it's the reason why we're asking for those funds. And like I said, in your, in the attachment to the staff report, it said it was for the Regional Housing Authority, but it's actually for the city, but the Housing Authority manages for us. And then, finally, these were requests for public facilities. Our Uba City Public Works each year has a request for ADA sidewalks, and then our city, City of Uba City Parks Department asks for funding for their parks. You will notice, I'm going to go back to the last slide, we were almost fully funding all those requests, other than the Regional Housing Authority. And then, for the public facilities, it's ten thousand dollars less than what was requested for Public Works, and sixty thousand less for the Parks Department. So, this is all based upon the idea that we're going to receive at least the same amount of funding as last year, if not more. Additionally, this current year, we will probably have budget savings as relates to administration, and that means in your next year, you could actually allocate some of those funds for public facilities projects. You could not put it towards the public services, because you're capped at the fifteen percent, but for the public facilities, you can do more. Where the other ones, it's capped at twenty and fifteen percent, public facilities, you can do as many as you'd like, or your housing projects. So, the next steps is this evening to just get feedback from the council if we're going in the right or wrong direction. If you feel like we're going in the right direction, we will finish up the action plan. We'll contact all of our sub- recipients and let them know this is the recommendation that'll be going to the city council, and then we will hold on to it until we hear back from the federal government on what our funding will be for fiscal year nineteen twenty. And then, I can answer any questions that the council might have.
Alright. Before we do that, we'll go ahead and open up for public comment, if any? Nothing? Alright, anything from the council?
Through the mayor, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Gale. I have a couple of questions. For the hundred and thirty thousand administration, what's that going for? Help educate me.
Yeah, so, I'm glad you asked that. First, I have our administrative analyst for our department, Jaspreet, who about fifty percent of her time is spent on CDBG, so that pays for her staff time. It pays for my staff time for working on this project and anyone else on the city that works with CDBG. Additionally, we do have an outside consultant. With CDBG, we need to make sure that we follow all the rules, and unfortunately, as with staff turnover, it's been a long time since we've had a person that's been with the city for an extended period of time to run CDBG. It's about every year or two, we've turned over staff, and so we've had to use outside consultants to help us prepare our staff reports, our annual reports, and our CAPR. I would say even with a full-time staff person, we'll always have a little bit of work for an outside consultant. So, that's where the administrative fees could go for. This coming year, we have to prepare the five-year consolidated plan, so there'll be a significant amount of additional staff time that'll be required as part of CDBG, which we have every five years, and that's where that funding goes for.
Thanks, I appreciate that. Just out of curiosity, what are we paying the consultant for their help?
So, they charge us eighty dollars an hour, and, I was trying to think, was it Jaspreet? How much have we provided so far this year? So, seventeen thousand to date this year that we've provided Stewart Consulting. We have two former staff members from the city of Roseville, who, that's all they did for twenty-five years with the city of Roseville, and they're the ones who helped provide us guidance. They're also very affordable compared to other consultants I've looked at recently, which were well over a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and seventy-five dollars to help us on any type of project with CDBG funds.
Thank you. The workshop on the sixth, how many people or how many organizations actually attended?
So, this year, I think we had seven different organizations attend, which I was told is the similar as past years. We were a little disappointed that a couple did not show, but we followed up with them. One of the things that Jaspreet and also our consultant have been tasked with is following up with all of our sub- recipients to make sure that they actually apply, and encourage people to come in and apply for the funds.
Did we turn down any applications? It looks like everybody that applied got funded.
Everyone that applied is being recommended for some type of funding.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Through the mayor. Mr. Gale, thank you for your presentation. You said in the beginning that we should see some savings this year in the administrative area. How much are you possibly anticipating in the savings there?
Right now, we're looking at around thirty thousand dollars, possibly.
Okay. So, realistically, I mean, we're just going with the standard twenty percent, which is one thirty, but really, we're looking at possibly a hundred thousand in cost, and thirty thousand in potential savings.
So, what I mean for savings, I'm sorry, I didn't clarify. The savings is for fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, the current year that we're in. For next year, we do believe that we'll expand the full hundred and thirty amount. It might go a little bit over, but again, like I said, we have at least thirty thousand probably savings this year from administration that could then be put over into fiscal year nineteen, twenty.
Okay. Along those lines, I want to go back down to the housing projects. You identified the two different projects, and one is city-owned and a city responsibility, and the second, is it Kingwood?
Yes.
Is not a city obligation, correct?
That is correct.
I go back and want to make a recommendation on reallocation of funds here. As I mentioned a while back, even in our priorities and goals, ownership and taking care of what is our obligation to take care of. Being that we have potential savings in the current year, I would recommend that we take the one thirty under administrative down to one twenty, with the anticipation that we're going to have a thirty thousand dollar surplus to carry over. And then, not fund the Kingwood project, because that's not a city obligation, but yet, go down and fully fund what is our obligations under public facility improvements, giving Public Works the full two-ten, and giving the playground equipment at San Brandon the full one-sixty, because we've had funds that's come out of the parks and wrecks for various things that we've seen through this. I just firmly believe we need to take care of our own first, and then, as the surplus presents itself, then we can reach out, because that's an obligation we have to our citizens, and that's something that we own, and that's something that we can control. And so, I would ask the council to indulge me with a reallocation.
Mayor, so this is a note and file, not really, actually, it's just a recommendation at this time, and so that recommendation is noted. Thank you very much. Anything else?
I want to comment.
Go ahead.
Okay. Kingwood is not a city piece of property. It's part of the Regional Housing Authority for helping folks of low income. So, not helping these folks puts a burden, and things won't get done, and we already have a homeless issue in our community. We're going to be adding to it if we don't step up to help these folks at this time. We've done it for many years. It's, you know, it's keeping the community. It might not be ours, but this is part of our community. I just wanted to mention that. So, he noted that, and I'd like to note that we still please give him the maximum amount, because they are old, and they need to be kept upkeep, and a little bit that we don't give them now could cost us twice as much next year or the year after. So, I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Through the mayor.
Yes.
If they're, good presentation. Thank you for doing that. The only, perhaps, I might adjust the comment with the Uba-Sutter Homeless Consortium. It's just probably the limitations of the funds that creates a difference of opinion. But I think, you know, I have to say that the city of Uba City was one of the first cities that started really working on this homeless issue before any other jurisdiction in our region. And I think a few people do not recognize or have that information, because having worked on this for a long time, so I thank the city for being ahead of the situation as compared to other jurisdictions. I think very few people know that. With the homeless consortium, I think that the work that's been done in the coordination of those services and requiring those coordination is really important. I think the administration and planning part of it, some of those funds this year, you know, if we have an excess, you know, over thirty, if we have thirty thousand perhaps, and if we are going to do the five-year plan, which, you know, do we have a reference of how much the last five-year plan cost us by chance? And if you can research that, if you don't have that information, that would be helpful for the next time. But I think that the rest of the housing program projects and the way that you have broken down the, divided down the funds, I accept your recommendations, and just that some of the shortfalls for the next year, we have to make sure that we know where that plan might cost us. If it's going to cost us more than a hundred and thirty thousand, you know, we need to know that ahead of time, if we can try to plan for that. That's what I would suggest. Thank you.
Alright. Thank you very much, Darren.
So, Mayor, for some correction, or for additional direction as we put together the action plan, I've heard a couple council members stay with, to stay with the existing proposal. I've heard another council member state possibly making some changes in reallocating funds. As we go back as a staff, obviously, we don't need a motion here this evening, but could I get a little bit more direction? Should I continue on with the existing proposal, or should I make some changes as proposed by one of our council members?
Without further to schedule, we'd almost have to vote on something like that to decide where the majority is on that without a motion. Were you able to even vote without a motion?
You can provide preliminary guidance. You can choose to do a formal vote on this item, either one.
The proposal by Councilmember Shaw, while looking at it here, I see some validity to it. I also, I would like to get a status on the Kingswood Common Roofing Project to see where that is and how dependent upon that in the historical perspective we have on that. I don't know if it's a, do we have a roof with holes in it, with emergency repair? They're relying on that money, because we've done it historically? Can I understand that possible? I don't know where that is, if it's just a routine replacement on a schedule, whether it needs it or not, for example. But I do, I mean, it's even seventy thousand, we'll be able to fully fund our own things. That makes sense to me. But I also would hate to see people who are relying on this traditional contribution be left out in the cold, even literally in this case. I don't really have enough information to decide which one way or the other right now.
Through the mayor.
Yep.
The director of the Regional Housing Authority is here. Is he, could he speak concerning the roofing repairs that need to be made? Shannon?
Yeah, he probably can talk.
Gus, if you'd like to speak on that, please, it would be very helpful for a council's decision.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Gustavo Becerra, Executive Director of the Regional Housing Authority. Our agency has owned this property since two thousand and three. It was a, what's considered, back in two thousand and two, it was considered a, what they call an at-risk property per your housing element. The city approached the Housing Authority to see if we would persuade us to purchase it, before my time, but the information that I have was that we partnered with the city, and the city invested some redevelopment funds before redevelopment agencies were stripped away. And the property at the time had anywhere from two and a half to three million dollars of deferred capital needs, yet predecessors that sit in my chair chose to buy it. In hindsight, I would have not purchased that property. But here we are, and the property breaks even, you know, on a good year. It does not generate a whole lot of cash, because it was an at-risk property. What that means is that the affordability covenants recorded on the title are about to expire, meaning that a market rate developer can pick it up and, you know, do whatever. That hurts the city's housing element, and so, the Housing Authority stepped in, purchased it, maintained it affordable, maintained it affordable, but without any subsidies. So, the rents have been maintained low in order to keep it an affordable housing project, but there are no subsidies attached to it. So, it's very hard for us to make the deal pencil on an annual basis with no subsidies. So, for the benefit of the public, we try to keep the rents as affordable as possible. We do raise them from time to time in order to keep up with water and sewer and insurance increases, and try to build up a little bit of reserves to take care of the most important capital improvements. And from our perspective, roofing is, you know, you start from the bottom down to the top. There are nine buildings at the property. Seven have been re-roofed. They are the original, the two that have not been re-roofed, I'll just back up a little bit, five have been re-roofed, two we put out to bid, and as soon as we get some break in the weather, the contractor's starting on two more to get us to seven. The other two are the original roofs, over forty years old, and we are applied to get the eighth roof through the city CDBG program, to get the eighth roof completed, leaving us one more. Again, we don't have the reserves to take care of it. It is an original roof of forty years old that we're patching, but it has reached its useful life. We, you know, we would hate to have to displace people, and we have nowhere to put them, and there's not much of vacancy, you know, in the city to take care of these residents. But we ask that you reconsider the reallocation and that you fund the project, and I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
Gus, so what you're saying is these roof, the roof on building number A, it's to the extent where it cannot be patched any longer?
We've patched it numerous times. It's just reached its useful life. It's a thirty-year comp shingle, and it's over forty years old, and so...
Alright, and so, without this funding here, you may be in a position to have to displace people, is what you're telling me?
Probably, Mayor, yes.
Probably, alright. No other funding sources identified?
We do not have any.
Nothing, alright.
And just for one last little bit of information, the city has funded two other, partially funded, two other roofs at that property, so we've paid for five of those, and the city has assisted us with two others, and so we are looking for...
What does it cost to replace the building?
So, there are two stories, and out of the nine buildings, there are five different building types. So, this one that we applied for, for this year through your CDBG program, we haven't put it out to bid yet, obviously, pending your approval. But just from past history of other roofs, we believe that one will come in in the seventy to eighty thousand dollar range, probably, depending on how much dry rot we find. to eighty thousand dollar range, probably, depending on how much dry rot we find underneath.
Right. All right. And we have another suggestion here?
Yeah. This isn't for you, Gus, thanks. It's either for Mr. Gale or our city manager. Couple weeks back or a couple meetings ago, we talked about funding for for the the low-income housing project on Garden Highway. And during that, during those discussions, it was, I think, raised that the possibility of using low-mod housing for the homeless shelter, for temporary homeless shelter, was a permitted use. And I believe staff was going to go back and find out whether that was accurate or not. Have you guys been able to do that? And the reason I ask is if you if if we could find you some funding out of that low-mod housing fund to do the the homeless piece that's up above, we may be able to create some funds to help the the roofing project.
So I did go back and research it as from what I was looking at that time was construction of a facility. And yes, there was a bill that changed the law in two thousand and seventeen that allowed you to use funding to build temporary homeless shelters. I did not look to see if it was specifically related to operations. And what I proposed up here above, the fifty percent, is specifically for operations, if I'm answering your question.
I'm simply trying to find a solution.
But.
To to get a roof over these people's heads, but also support the homeless piece. And we do have this pot of money that's a that can be potentially used for the temporary shelter. You're the subject matter expert in regards to its applicability or not, but.
To my knowledge, it's it's used for the facility, not for operations. However, I believe that their roof project could qualify for the low-mod housing fund.
Okay.
Through the mayor. I don't want to seem like I'm the the bad person here and I'm against the Regional Housing Authority, because I'm not. Gus, I want to say I commend you guys because I've 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 been into your minutes, and I know the hole that you're digging out of. But it's a big hole. It honestly is. The reason that I brought this forward is this isn't the first time that this has been there. This was in the Regional Housing Authority's minutes almost a year ago with no solution to and no money to put a roof on this. They are, as I brought it up when they asked for the other money for the the other project, that they are in deficit spending. And I don't want the city to end up just being the go-to when an organization is not self-sufficient. I realize we need to take care of these people. We need to make sure that they are sufficient. But at the same time, when I read the most recent report of from RHA, and they're talking income numbers coming in, and I don't know the specifics, and it's probably compartmentalized, but eighty percent of what was coming in was going for administrative. And we can't put a roof on a building that is not owned by the city. I want to see RHA actually get more financially stable themselves. I don't mind helping them, but I do not want the city to turn into a blank check that every time we turn around, we'll put a roof on, we'll help you fund the building. So there's some give and take. That's the reason, Gus, that I'm more stringent on it is because I see the hole that you're digging out. It's not that I'm against RHA. It's just simply that I want RHA to do the same thing the city is doing, and let's take a real good look at your budget, figure out how to prioritize taking care of your tenants versus the admin side first, because that's what troubles me, and that's why I brought it up. So if we can find a compromise and a solution, but I I don't want to keep funding projects that really aren't the city's obligation when we've got other things that are our obligation.
Through the mayor. Director Gus, can you go up to the podium, please?
Yes.
It's your opportunity to respond back to Councilman Shaw's comments about his research. Is there an opportunity to correct?
Yeah, I just don't I don't agree with the eighty percent number that you're referring to, and maybe I'm just not clear, but no, we don't run our our properties with an eighty percent administrative cost to programs or properties. So I I'm not sure what you're referring to.
It was in your most recent board minutes that you approved just about a month ago.
Well, again, we don't own any properties or manage any programs where our administrative fees make up eighty percent of the expense. So so I I disagree with that, council member.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be happy to tomorrow to send it to our city manager, and then she can forward it out to all the council members. It's just a simple copy of their minutes that addresses what I was talking about.
Yeah, I think enough gray area has been discussed here that we're not prepared to make a specific direction. The staff at this time will have to continue it to our next meeting. I would look forward to getting that additional information, and we can have some further discussion offline and research, and then come back.
Thank you, Gus. And if you have an opportunity to provide evidence as well, I would welcome for you to forward that information to us as well.
Yeah, for clarity, are you are we talking about when you say administrative expenses for properties, are we talking about water, garbage, sewer, staff time, maintenance, et cetera? Or are you referring to staff time?
I would say refer to your minutes because that's where I took the information is directly off your website, your minutes. And I believe that was two meetings ago is where those minutes were located. I saved them, and I'll be happy to forward them to our city manager.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And then I'd like to make a final comment for council and the public that Gus here with his leadership, the Regional Housing Authority, got the number one award for the state of California through his leadership for having great leadership and and all the housing in the communities, actually in, what do we got, several counties, right, Gus?
For three properties.
For three for three properties. Could you? Right. Can I can you run up and tell exactly what the award was? That way it'd be please make because it is a great honor and through his leadership. Please.
Councilmember Cardoza and members of the council, that award was for it was called the Public Housing Program of the Year, and it was specifically for the aggregate of three properties, one located in Live Oak, fifty-unit senior project, Live Oak Senior Village, and two located in Uba City, twenty-four unit senior housing property located on Joanne Way, and a ninety-nine unit multifamily property located in Uba City in Richland Housing. And it was specific to those three properties that fall under HUD's Public Housing Program, not not our entire portfolio. So so a total of a hundred and several three, a hundred and seventy-three units making up that portfolio. And so they grade you on your finances, your management, capital improvements, financial indicators, et cetera. But it was specifically to those units.
Thank you, Gus.
Sure.
All right. Thank you very much.
So what do we want to use for his leadership? Do you what we want to? He needs what to do?
What?
He needs to be told what he needs to be told.
I just told him we're going to discuss.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.